Zoom meeting of the Psych Bell Mayor and Town Council for Monday, April 13th. So just making sure I got all my notes here. All right, so let's start the meeting with Pledge of Allegiance followed by a brief moment of silence. A pledge allegiance.
Do the flag.
States of America. And to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Okay, moment of silence. Okay, thank you all. Hopefully that moment of silence could be for all the people that are out there helping us stay safe. Um, all right, so for our consent agenda tonight, and I know I'd saw him in the, um, let me change my view here. So I think we saw Keith in there, so, um, I don't know if he's still on air, but we got the minutes from April 6, 2020, and then the appointment of Keith Mathis to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term ending in April 2023. Has anybody got any questions about those items?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. All right, so then, I don't know, like, let me see if I can get this thing to be bigger. I don't know how to make my screen bigger, Carrie, once it goes away. You, hold on. Soon, Ray.
What are you looking for, Mr. Mayor?
I was trying to make my screen bigger so I can see everybody, because I can't see everybody. But when you, when you popped the attend up, everybody went away. So I don't know. How do you do that?
Uh, the closest you'll get is go into grid view up at the top corner of your page or of your, your video list.
Yeah, did that, but I'm still missing some people, so let me see, let me see if I can stretch this thing. There you go, hold on a second, I got it. All right, okay, so now that that's done, so the only thing, so Keith, you were, you were, the consent agenda was approved? So, so I think you're supposed to be on the phone, I don't know how you got on the video.
Okay, let, let me get off of this and get on the phone, I appreciate it.
No, 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 it's all good, because we, we just want to be fair to everybody, so if we have you on there, we're gonna have to, yeah. So it should be on the phone, so.
I'll get off, thank you.
We can wait if you want to, we'll give you a minute to get on the phone.
All right, well, they can proceed, I'll, I'll get off.
Okay, all right, thank you so much. Okay, so the next item was the, um, new business is the introduction of, um, ordinance number 2020-04, and this is for disturbing the peace. Um, so I think, Chief, did you wanna, or Joe, if you guys wanna?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take it, and Chief could certainly add in anything that, that he seems, or that he wants to, uh, to add to the conversation. But obviously, this is in response to some of the issues we've been having during particularly large events of, uh, folks not using the proper facilities, the facilities that are provided by the event organizers. Uh, so it was brought to my attention after the, uh, the Beer Festival that, um, we actually didn't have anything on our books, uh, that would allow the chief to enforce this type of behavior during these events. So, uh, we wanted to go ahead and fill that gap and get an ordinance in place so that when, uh, we have these events in the future that, um, uh, if people do decide they don't want to use the, the toilet facilities that are provided, uh, we can actually write them tickets and then, uh, uh, charge them through the town. So again, that's where this, uh, this ordinance came from, uh, it does give us the ability to do that, and, um, it's, uh, ready for introduction tonight and, um, uh, adoption at our next meeting.
Yeah, Joe, I would just like to add, this is, this is a great tool for us, and we'll be, uh, we've, we've been, uh, asking for this for some time now, and I appreciate, Joe, you getting this done, because I think it'll really come in handy for us to, to have this tool if, if, uh, there's an incident where somebody is, uh, conducting that type of behavior in public and give us an enforcement tool in a way to hopefully deter people from doing this sort of thing. So thank you.
A question that I have for the ordinance, uh, prior to moving forward, actually a couple of questions. One question is, how many, uh, complaints have we received in reference to this? Um, just seems like we've gone a long time within the town without having it, I was wondering if there's any history there about why we haven't had it before? Have we just not thought that we needed it before? Um, so that's one question, uh, and then the other one is, is that I, I definitely noticed, uh, the clear intent of, uh, this ordinance, uh, based on the language. Um, I'm wondering if it covers anything else, like noise or anything along those lines?
Yeah, I can, I can talk to the, to the second question and, and simply say that it does not, it is pretty specific as to, uh, what the intent of the ordinance is. Now, that doesn't mean that this particular new chapter that's being created can't then include, uh, a noise component at some point in the future. But again, we wanted to make sure we had this on the books, uh, uh, right away. Granted, uh, you know, it, on my calendar, we are getting ready for the Wine Festival, but I know that's since been pushed out, so, uh, obviously, we still have some time before we have a, another large event, but, uh, again, the purpose of this particular ordinance was, um, uh, very specific. But I'll give, uh, I'll let Chief talk to the, the history there, uh, I know, at least during the, the Beer Festival, the recent Beer Festival, I, I noticed it happening quite a bit.
Yeah, in terms of the history, Jeremiah, um, I can only speak anecdotally, I mean, we, it has happened in the past, I can't tell you how many times, at least a handful of times. I mean, there's been some events where we didn't see anybody doing this at all, uh, but I just think it was an oversight on the town's part by not having this in, in the code. Uh, many other municipalities had this in the code, and in fact, I think we copied this one from, I believe, Westminster, Joe, was that, was that right? I think it was.
Yeah, that was, that was the code we pulled it from.
And so it's a tool that I'm used to, uh, using in my prior, uh, you know, career with the state police, it's, it's something I thought was, would be valuable to, to us in the event we see a violation and want to take some type of enforcement action. Thanks, Chief. Sir.
I have a question concerning the placement of the ordinance, I don't have a problem with the ordinance itself, because we need that. But disturbing the peace, is that the appropriate place to put it? Or would it be better suited under a different section, like indecent exposure or inappropriate behavior?
Yeah, again, we, you know, we created this chapter thinking that it could be a catch-all for potentially several other, uh, potential disturbing the peace-type ordinances. Um, if there is a, a different place where we want to put it, you know, again, it's, it's almost six of one, half dozen of, of the, another. Um, so again, we're open to suggestions on, on where it could be placed. Uh, again, we, I wanted to create this chapter just because I think that disturbing of the peace category could contain, you know, several other potential ordinances as we move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and I had sort of the same question as Jeremiah did, um, about the noise of trying to get some sort of noise ordinance, because we have had a lot of complaints for that, and I mean, I know the chief, your concern is, and by the way, we're getting your head cut off, so I don't know if you can move your camera a little bit, I don't know how this matters, but it's better to see your face, so, but anyway.
Back up a little bit.
But anyway, what I was saying was, um, the, I know you're worried about getting a monitoring, something to monitor, right, to check the sound, like how do you enforce it without some, the tool, right, to?
Right. Yeah, but. And that can be easily accomplished with the training and, and the, and the equipment to do that. Uh, my, my only concern was that we couldn't have this ordinance without those, those tools and that training, because you have to base it on some type of reading, it can't just be, uh, left to the discretion of the officer or someone to say that it seemed like it was too loud or it was noisy, there should be some consistent and fair method of measuring that in order for us to be able to successfully prosecute these cases.
Okay, so I think we should, like, I, I like the idea of creating the disturbing the peace category and then, but we should look in to see what the decibels are and times of some other ordinance, because I think this would be a good place to get started with that, but.
Absolutely.
Question two.
Yeah, I'm sure there's a standard out there for that.
Yeah, and I, I do have a model Norris ordinance that we've already, we started putting together, but, um, again, it just hadn't, we hadn't run it through the, the grinder yet, so we didn't want to, uh, introduce that along with this one.
Okay. Any other questions, son, for Chief or Joe on this?
Uh, one thing I forgot to point out, I didn't, I didn't, uh, remember until, uh, Carrie brought up the article there, uh, on the screen, but, uh, under 76.02, uh, some section B, that violation section, we're, we're gonna move out to its, its own section, so that that violation language actually applies to the entire article, not just that one specific section. So again, I just wanted to point that out, that that is a, a tweak we're gonna make between the introduction and the adoption, uh, next meeting.
Okay.
So again, the, the fine and everything's gonna stay the same, it's just gonna look a little different when you see it again.
So you're proposing then, Joe, that, uh, no matter the violation should have fallen under the, uh, this particular ordinance of, of disturbing the peace, the fine would be $100?
That's correct.
Thank you.
So do you wanna, do you wanna add any, uh, I guess, monetary value stepping up? Like if there's a second infraction within a month or something like that, or does she just come on and keep it $100 as is right now?
Yeah, I mean, I prefer just to keep it, you know, level, nice and easy, rather than having to track it that way, but, um, I know in our code already, it does include several different classes of misdemeanors, um, so again, this one is, is listed as a class B, uh, we go up to a class D, I can't remember the, the fine off the top of my head, but I know there is a graduated scale. Um, that's something I might be able to work with Chief on to figure out exactly how that works, like what, what you have to do to qualify for the higher, higher class, but, um, something we can look into between first and second readings, if you want.
Yeah, maybe, I was just, I mean, this, this, uh, is pretty specific to a one-time event, obviously, I would, I'm, I'm guessing, so it's a good start, but I was just thinking further down the line.
Okay.
So one other, that leads to another question for me, so, uh, I remember not that far in the past, we had an issue with some youth and some graffiti, um, and the way, and it was worked out, and that I thought the chief did a great job, and, uh, the others on the force did a great job with trying to work that out in a amicable way for all parties. Is this something that could be worked out in that way as well? If a person was, you know, I see that it's a misdemeanor, um, and I, you know, I'm just, I'm wondering, you know, if a person just has a, a lapse in judgment or something like that, um, is this something that could be worked out that way?
Yeah, well, again, um, you know, I, I trust my officers to make those type of decisions, they, they certainly have to have discretion in, in terms of enforcement. Um, so I, I trust their judgment, if, if it's, like you said, a, a one-time violation, they've never seen this person do this before or haven't had any, any other issues with this particular individual, a warning could certainly be appropriate. Um, but, um, again, uh, it depends on the, how flagrant the violation is, you know, I mean, there's, there's a lot of factors to go into the decision whether to charge or not, and again, I have to leave, leave, you know, that up to the officers to make those, those type of sound decisions with, with, you know, my oversight.
Understood. So it's, it sounds like there is some room in case, yeah, okay, thanks, that's all I wanted to know, thanks.
So if little Billy was stood, standing between his mom and his dad, and they're horrified, your officer can look the other way as long as they're making sure it never happens again.
Of course, right.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this? Okay, so then I guess we need a motion to introduce this, we're gonna introduce this.
I'll make the motion, Mayor, uh, make a motion, uh, to accept the introduction of ordinance 2020-04, uh, with adoption to, uh, be planned for our next council meeting on April 27.
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Thank you all for that, and thanks Chief and, uh, Joe for working on that, appreciate it. Okay, our next item is to, uh, discuss and consider the Act on a Sick Leave Donation Policy. So I know, Mark, you brought up a couple of things, and we were just briefly talking them over, and then, I don't know if there's any other questions on this topic as well. So do you want to start this off too, Joe, or?
Sure, again, this is kind of a stepping from a conversation we had, I believe it was the last time we all were physically in the room together. Um, but, uh, our current sick leave policy does allow the council to, uh, advance sick leave, uh, to employees that have expended all of their other, uh, available leave to them. Um, and then part of that conversation kind of went into, well, do we have a, some sort of donation policy, which of course, we did not. Um, so, uh, before you tonight, obviously, is, uh, is a policy to achieve that, it does, uh, set some standards as far as, you know, allowing eligible employees to receive sick time and for employees that have a minimum balance of 240 hours of sick leave, uh, to be able to donate to folks. Um, the, the one question that was, uh, brought up, uh, by, uh, Councilman Dyer, uh, regarding, you know, why take away the advance component if you're gonna also allow this donation policy too? What's the problem with having both available to, uh, potential employees or for employees? Um, and I guess one of, the, the concern that I came up with, uh, while I was, uh, drafting or putting this policy together was, you know, there's a provision in there, it says the employee has to utilize all of their available leave that's, that's, that they have. So if you have a donation or if you have a, um, uh, the availability to ask for an advance on your, on your sick leave, we didn't want there to be any kind of confusion about, well, if you can ask for an advance, then maybe you haven't actually used up all of your available sick leave then. So rather than having both available, let's eliminate any potential confusion that can be created there, and just eliminate that advance and just have it to all of the leave that has already been accrued, the employee would have to use up, and then they'd be, um, uh, allowed to accept donations from other employees.
Jump in here, um, having an agency that had both arrows in the quiver, guess what I'm worrying about? I always run scenarios when I hear a, a rule, that's how I operate. Have the curmudgeon who does a job that no one likes because it's necessary, and they don't really like him because he's gotta be the, the town curmudgeon, but he's doing a great job, he becomes ill, people may not want to donate to him, but he's, but we feel compelled. Having a backstop of, if necessary, we could go that extra step, strikes me as a way to solve that problem. And, and if you're worried about wording, just say balance, right now, before anything's granted, the balance would not be there at all.
Yeah, again, it was just a, a concern, if, if, uh, the council doesn't see it as a concern, then by all means, we can, we can leave it available.
My, my comment, my thought on this, and I don't know about the advance, has anybody got any, while we're on that topic, does anybody else share any of those concerns about the advanced piece, or?
No, I think, uh, I think if there is a need for an advance, I think Joe should bring it to the council like he did recently with a, with another employee. If, if, you know, there's nobody available to donate, and that person needs to come to an advance, I think it would be council-approved. Just my thought.
Yeah, I like that idea as well, I was, I mean.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay, I, I think I like that, the other question that I had, and Leah, you might be able to speak to this more, um, is it's 12 months? Like, I know in the past where we had people out, like, I mean, or in the council, maybe, I'm thinking, but what if, that seems like an awful long time to be without an employee, like, I don't know, like, would we, how that would work, what if we need to get an intern or something, you know? That was one of the, like, because this could be a, a year without an employee, that would be detrimental to the staff, wouldn't it? I mean, I don't know.
Well, but you, again, the reason I had to limit it to something there was, you know, if somebody saves up a significant amount of vacation time, maybe they have some comp time banked, and they did have already six months, which is the maximum amount of sick time that they had. Once they blew through all that, they would have already been out for nine months or so, or whatever that number might be. So then the donation would only be, you know, another, you know, three months on top of that. So there's already kind of a, uh, you know, a, a pretty significant window that somebody could be off even without the donation policy.
Yeah, that's my point, so, could, would we, would it make sense, again, and this could come back to the council, I don't know, like, if it goes past nine months to get approval, I, I just, um, for the donation, only because, I don't know, I mean, I'm not trying to be too restrictive, but that just seems like a, that's a long time to, for the other staff members to have to cover the, you know, the workload, like I'm just worried about, like, that's a long time. So I don't know, what, I wanted to hear everybody else's thoughts on that. See what, if anybody's got.
Can I, I've lost the bubble here, can I go back to my topic? I just want to be sure I understand, I thought that required council approval, and you were trying to remove a mechanism for even the council to grant advance leave.
The advance.
Did your note or?
Well, no, the, the advance.
Will the council be able to grant leave if it chooses?
The advance, yes, that's, that's gonna stay in there, based on this conversation.
I, okay, I thought what your note said, the facility should be removed entirely, maybe I misread it.
It did. But again, based on this conversation, it sounds like everybody wants to leave that there, which is fine. Um, now, the donation itself, the donation policy from employee to employee, that would not be council-approved, at least not the way it's drafted right now.
Correct. So Ian, what is your concern about the length of time? Is it just, you know, leaving a short staff, is it the, the need to hire a temp?
Yeah, kind of those, both of those, right, I'm just worried like a year, man, without an employee could be like a dream. You know, you can imagine, I mean, everybody's doing a pretty important job, so for, on for a year, there's a lot to cover. So do we need to get, do we need to get a temp, do we need a, I don't know, like, do we want somebody out, like, I don't know, because I'm, I'm just, and, and for all intents and purposes, it probably would never happen, right, I doubt this would come up, but what if it does, where you get one of these, um, situations where maybe, I, I, I don't know if they would get a donation, that was the other thing that I had a little bit of concern about is, how, how do people feel pressured to, like, give up their time, like, if somebody's really sick or something, but still, I don't want people to feel like, you know, obligated to donate their time either, I don't know how, you know, without being in an awkward position, these are my concerns, and I don't, because I've never seen, are there other policies like this that we got this from, or are we kind of making this up on air? I, I, I'm, I need, I guess I need a little more info on that, is kind of where I'm.
And, and again, I've, I've seen policies like this before, um, I can't remember specifically where, uh, this policy came from, I believe it was the state police, um, uh, that it's, uh, based off of, but of course, it's, it's significantly modified and scaled down to, you know, what we would need it for. Um, but again, I mean, I have worked with policies like this before, um, and typically, you know, you don't, you don't see a lot of pressure for employees to donate their time, you know, if anything else, it's, it's trying to convince people that, you know, somebody's not trying to take advantage of the system. So getting them to donate at all sometimes is, is very difficult, rather than the other way around, but, um, again, it's, it's a nice, it, it's, it's a nice policy to add, just in, is to, to give, uh, employees the, at least some sort of idea that if something does happen to them that's significant, that's gonna put them out of work, or, or, or cause them to miss a lot of work, that, you know, there, there is a mechanism that they can continue on with, um, with receiving that paycheck for, you know, up to a year. Uh, but then again, that, that's not a year worth of donated time, that's a year in totality, so then they would have to, um, use up a lot of their time as well. This isn't just donated time.
And, and I think, uh, Ian, with your concern regarding, you know, being a full year, uh, that others would have to cover or, or us being down a, a significant number of the team, I think, um, the important thing to recall is that there is an opportunity for them to be off for nine months if they accumulate everything and they're using it all at one clip because of an illness. Um, extending it another three months would be a very extenuating circumstance, and I think even this whole borrow and, and donation of time in and of itself is a, is only going to happen under extenuating circumstances and having a, a, a mechanism by which to do that, I think, is important. I think we all would be concerned if somebody were out for a year, um, but again, it's, it's for an extenuating, very extenuating circumstance, and I think this would ever be even taken advantage of, so.
Okay, yeah, so that, I mean, that, that makes sense, and I'm not, I'm always worried about that one thing that goes bad, you know, on you, but I'm also thinking though about, like, wouldn't disability, like, kick in at some, when do you get disability insurance for stuff like that? I don't know, I mean, if it's.
That was gonna be my question, don't, if you're gonna be out that long, we've already got a short-term disability plan.
Yeah, typically, short-term disability is a percentage of, uh, of pay, not full pay.
So can you, can you get both then?
No. No, if you're, if you're on leave, you don't get short-term disability. Part of, I think part of qualifying for short-term disability means you have to, you have to use up all the leave that you have, that include, that would include donated time. So short-term disability would be something after that.
This would work with FMLA then, you would get paid for, while you're FMLA, which is 12 weeks.
Yes.
Joe, does this policy have, um, a donation from whenever? So I can say I get three hours every pay, once a month, I want to donate those three hours to a pot? Or is it a specific case that people will donate?
It's a case-by-case basis, it's not a, it's not a bank, it would have to be for an individual that needs it.
Okay.
Okay, well, I mean, I guess I'm okay with it, I guess, I, like I said, I, I wouldn't want to, if you could get the disability and then other people could keep their time, that would seem to be an ideal situation, right? I don't know, but, because then you, you, you still want people, other people to have sick time if they need it, so, but.
Well, again, I mean, we can, we can, we can pause on this and let people, you know, have, give everybody a chance to, to read it over, and if you need additional information, like, you know, what is our, uh, short-term disability policy? And, you know, how much time, in theory, could somebody, you know, save up and use all at once? You know, I'm happy to start pulling some of that together and, and present it next time, if, if you don't want to act on it tonight.
Could I just add something?
Sure.
Go ahead.
I mean, my six years, there's been, in two occasions now, one with a sworn employee and one with a civilian employee, where they were in this situation where they had no leave, uh, left, and there was other, other officers, personnel with, within the police department, they were willing to donate leave, and we just didn't have the, the vehicle to, to do this, so, um, I think it's a great thing. Uh, and the other point I wanted to make was, uh, the, uh, sick leave donations actually can be found in co-mart, which is Maryland law. So it's, it's well-established policy that the state police uses and, and many other agencies, so it, it is in Maryland law.
Can I make a suggestion then, that to protect our people, we put some points on the board, and if we want to change it later, we can, at least get this going?
I would agree with what Mark just said, um, and I've had a similar application as I think he has, uh, working in the federal government. This has been something that's, it's a very nice thing to be able to have, um, I've had different employees of mine that have used it, where they even use it for four or eight hours a week, uh, for like half a day or a full day, because they just don't have the leave. Person going through debilitating cancer treatments, or, um, they've got different ailments, like back injuries, and just different things that are taking them away from the workplace, where they're literally using all of their leave because of doctor's appointments and whatnot, and then people, like the chief said, are willing to step up. But I've also seen where people are just, like, like what Joe said, where people are skeptical about what the issue is, and they, they don't actually feel pressured, what happens is that typically, you know, the community of the employees will know whether or not this is something serious or something not serious, and, um, at least from their limited view of the situation, and they'll either pony up or they won't, and they won't feel, they won't feel obligated, and sometimes they will feel obligated, but it, but it comes out of a, a good personal place, that's how I've seen it, uh, over the last almost 20 years.
Seen people crying, and thanks to this kind of thing, they stop.
Okay, I mean.
I only have one other thing to add, I'm sorry, Mayor, um, it's actually a clerical, uh, uh, thing I'd like to offer, um, to the, uh, point, I guess it's for AII, for A2, I think we need to change, um, it says, "serious and prolonged medical, medical condition" to a member, I think it should be of a member of the employee's immediate family. You see that, Joe?
Yes, okay, yeah, I got it.
Thank you.
Okay, I think, uh, I mean, I'm fine with it, I was just trying to get the clarification for some of those items, but, so if somebody, if you want to get it started and get it, I guess, a policy on board, then, you know, hopefully it'll go smooth, I, I anticipate this would probably be go smooth as a rule, but, um, so I'm fine.
Yeah, obviously, if we have any problems, yeah, implementing it, or for some reason, you know, something starts to go sideways, um, with the donation policy, we'll certainly bring an amendment back to you.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, sick leave policy, eight dash, dash five, with, uh, the clerical correction that's Councilman Link mentioned.
Perfect.
Then we have the second.
My second.
I think Leo got it, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Okay, thanks, guys, and thanks for taking a look at that and getting all the questions out. Um, all right, so our announcements, our next mayor and town council meeting uh, is Monday, May, or I'm sorry, April 27th. Um, and this will also be a Zoom meeting unless there's a miraculous recovery of the country. Spring cleanup day has been postponed. Um, a new date will be announced um, after um, the state of emergency has been lifted and we can kind of figure out how that works with summer and the schedule of our public works department. Um, we have volunteer opportunities on the historic district commission, Sykesville Parks and Rec, the police auxiliary and a crossing guard. So we still need a crossing guard when school, if it, uh, it will restart at some point, but it'd be good to have somebody queued up for the crossing guard. So um, you can email um, kerry@town@sykesville.net for more information about volunteering uh, with these positions and the town. Um, so we'll get to staff updates. Joe, do you want to, any updates you have?
Yeah, just one quick thing before we jump into the treasury report. Uh, and again, I know I've been promising some budget information to everybody uh, here. I think, uh, you know, starting at the beginning of this month. So I do hope to get everything out to you uh, this week. Um, with that being said, obviously, it's going to be a lot of information for everybody to try to comb through. So we would like to schedule some sort of workshop, uh, obviously Zoom related uh, for next week, probably Wednesday or Thursday timeframe. Uh, but I'll send an email out just to let everybody know when that's going to be along with all of the budget information that we have. Uh, I want to, I want to give Mayor Shaw one, uh, one last opportunity to yell at me for a few things on the, in the budget. Just kidding, just kidding, it's a joke.
Looked at.
So been some lively conversations here at the townhouse, uh, talking about the budget. But um, uh, I want to give them one more opportunity to do that and then I'll send out all the information to council. Uh, and then, like I said, I'll, uh, we'll put together another Zoom meeting. Again, just a workshop uh, to, to go through the budget in detail so that then we can uh, have it introduced at the April 27th meeting and then hopefully adopted uh, on May 11th.
Yeah, and I, and I've kind of, I've went through and got all my comments down. There's not that many revisions, I think. Um, so we'll talk about that um, Thursday this week and we should have a, I think you'll be happy. We're, we're at the end. So, but I wanted to thank you and it's going to be a challenging couple of budgets probably coming forward, but so we're trying to be mindful, a little more mindful this time. Um, so I appreciate that, Joe. Okay, um, anything else for staff, there's comments or?
Treasury report?
Yep, Treasury report's next.
Good evening, everybody. Good to see you. Uh, hopefully you can hear me.
You can.
Okay, not too, not too loud. Two months ago, I had to do my first town treasure report at a podium. Now I have to do it in a Zoom fashion. This is all new to me, so trying to do my best here. But uh, at this time, I like to introduce the uh, February's version of the Treasurers Report. I don't know if everyone had a chance to review it or not. Speaking of budget, real quickly, I know a month ago, we did, Joe did, worked on revisions of the current budget. They are not in this report yet. They'll be in a March report mainly because we introduced the ordens in March. So to tie it together, we, I did it for that. So they're not reflective in this report yet, so I'm not sure if you were expecting that or not. Just to kind of, to kind of let you know that that's the case here. Just some really fast highlights now that Carrie put up the report, which I'm not usually seeing when we have the meetings. But uh, in terms of like the revenue, obviously, I'm sure we're all starting to be concerned about it. You know, obviously, the town property taxes, we've pretty much collected all that, which is really good. But there are some pockets that now seem to be a little, little weak and a little fearful that who knows what's going to happen in the future. I think down in the uh, intergovernmental section with uh, number one, income tax. Obviously, usually we get the bulk of that in May and June. Well, now that it's all been posted July, postponed to July, that I'm not sure when we'll see that monies quite yet. So in terms of the fiscal year 2020, obviously, that's probably going to be a, a little weakness in that area. Also, I think in terms of highway user uh, revenue, not sure exactly what's tapping there. But obviously, we're falling short, at least to what was told to us that we would receive this year. So again, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I'm learning on the job here. Uh, obviously, Joe and I have talked about this, so we're trying to wrap our head around all this, especially obviously going forward into next year. So hopefully that'll, we'll get some clarity on that level.
And, and just a, a quick addition to the highway user revenue piece. You know, we look back and, and those receipts are usually um, in the second quarter of the fiscal year is when we see it. So typically, we would have seen that revenue already before the, the outbreak of coronavirus and, and for whatever reason, we did, we didn't. But of course, that was something that neither Craig or I caught uh, until recently. So again, we are trying to, to figure out exactly why that revenue is as short as it is right now.
So a question that I guess I have is that uh, Maryland comptroller, comptroller uh, came out and said the state's looking at a potential 2.8 billion shortfall and, you know, major shortfall since the, the CARES Act doesn't uh, address municipalities. And then, so what's the impact there? And do we need to meet about changing any priorities for the budget for this year? I know I, I asked the question last week and, you know, the answer on the table then was we think that the budget will really be impacted next year, not this year. But I'm, I'm now wondering about this year. And then Governor Hogan uh, just put out a statewide budget freeze and I'm not sure how that impacts uh, Sykesville. And so I'm, you know, I'm still learning the budget myself, but I'm interested in those answers.
And, and I would still say with, even with regard to our income tax, you know, again, we are, we are short for the fiscal year. But typically in years past, we would, we would be short up until the last month or so of the fiscal year. So I think there's going to be still additional revenue that we collect in that category. Will we get up to the budgeted number? Uh, we'll probably end up not closing that gap completely before the end of the fiscal year. But I don't think it's going to impact our operating at all. Um, you know, I think even though, you know, we're, we're showing roughly another $225,000 or so to collect, it's not, it, it, it's not going to negatively impact the rest of the fiscal year. Uh, as far as the highway user revenues go, that's all of a capital expense anyway. You know, those are, those are zeroed out with capital dollars. So again, from an operating standpoint, that really hasn't hurt us. But again, that would, that would start dipping into potentially, you know, reserve account if, if we had to, if we had to get there. Uh, but like I said, that one's a little bit more of a mystery to me uh, for this particular meeting because again, typically that revenue, we would have seen a majority of that revenue long before any of uh, uh, any of the virus outbreak would have happened. So like I said, maybe stick a pin in that one um, and then really focus on the, the, the income taxes potentially being the, the largest deficit between now and the end of the fiscal year. But again, even, even that said, I, I don't think it's going to be quite as dramatic as, as it's showing on the, on the February report. I think we will make that gap up uh, at least a large part before the, before June 30th.
Do, do we need to have any uh, workshop type sessions to plan just in case we don't? I mean, we're, I mean, I. What happens if we don't get the, the rev, the revenue until, let's say, August? Does that affect, does that just mean we get more for next year or how does that work for this year?
Yeah, again, I, I, I don't think it's going to impact our, our current operating at all. Um, I think it's going to be, how does, how does this impact going forward into next fiscal year? Is it, you know, what, what changes would we potentially have to make with next fiscal year's budget? With potential shortfalls of revenue if this continues on? Because again, some of those shortfalls um, that the, the governor announced, that what was it? 2.8 billion dollars is if this continues through the end of June. You know, again, I guess we can all be hopeful and, and hope that that doesn't happen. But at the end of the day, um, I think we're, we're, we're pretty safe in, in, in our current fiscal year budget. Um, our concern is more next fiscal year. And when we get into next year's budget um, and talking about some of our options there, there are some things that, that we at least want to have on the table to talk about if, if it comes to that. So again, there, there may be some options available to us for next fiscal year to drive down that operating expense uh, just in case those revenues don't come in.
And Jeremiah, so this is one of the things I've been working hard on is trying to work on some of the capital expenditures to make sure that we can probably accomplish what we need to in this year to leave us some cushion in the next two years, you know? So it's been, that's where me and Joe have been having the, the push and pull about trying to figure out how to balance out everything, space it out correctly. And again, to Joe's point, I don't think this year's going to be as, as impacted as much. And I think we got to find out why those payments didn't come in for the highway user monies for this, this year, like he was saying. But I think in, and then I actually think that's going to be kind of a, a gap, a smaller gap. And our roads are in really good shape. So, and, and like he's saying, that's a budget neutral item. So I think we've done, we, and so I want to thank the council for being, this council and the ones before the last one has been proactive. We've spent a lot of money on our infrastructure and getting the roads back up. They're not like we were before. We're actually in a really good place now to weather uh, a down cycle in that, you know, because we've got some more money coming back and we were proactive on doing our over maintenance. So I think we're in pretty good shape. I mean, um, Derek and Mark can speak to that if they think that, that's not accurate. But I think overall, with this year's fixing up, we're, we're in pretty good shape where we could get a year or two slack if the user revenues aren't where we expect them to be. And I think some of the income, like keep in mind, a lot of the stimulus stuff and the things that are coming to the employers are incentivizing them to pay workers, you know, to get that relief. So I'm hoping that'll help smooth out some of the income tax piece. So I do anticipate some intergovernmental impact, but I think we're in pretty solid financial shape if we're mindful of what we're spending and then we can spread it out properly. Um, that we should be able to weather this without a drastic impact to this year's, well, certainly not this year's budget, but to our next couple of years' budget. And I've been really mindful of trying to plan it out for our capital be less intense next year and in '22 as well. To try, I mean, '22 and '23, really, we're trying to FY '22 and '23 to spread it out. So just wanted to share that with you, but I think you'll see once we get it coming together.
So not to, so I'll have just one last comment then is that um, you know, what you all are saying is, is great. Um, I'd like to see it in the numbers. And so when we see the numbers, when we have the workshop, that's where we'll essentially make sure that it's public for everyone so that they can see it. Is that the plan?
Yeah, no, absolutely, that's the plan. So typically, what, what they call it is the mayor's budget, right? So the mayor introduces the budget. Keep in mind, Joe, it's really Joe and Craig working along with the staff to come up with their budgets for each department and then bringing in all their capital expenditures. And then me and then I think Al helped work on it too, looked at it a little bit. And then, um, you know, early on, just to try to get a, a sort of a form, a form put together and then sort of asking the initial questions. And I, keep in mind, I've been through every budget now, putting them together. So I'm kind of, I got a lot of the history on the capital. And then we were looking, I was looking at what Aretha had proposed in capital and trying to balance out some of those numbers, what was left over from what we spent. And of course, Joe's doing all the same stuff. So I, I mean, I'll give the staff is really doing the, the yeoman's work on this. But then, you know, he gives it to me and I look at it and then compare my notes. And then we're going through and trying to balance it out, what we think is the best approach for us to, to sort of minimize. So yeah, but then absolutely, the council's going to get it next. And then um, hopefully, we'll be able to explain and justify each item in there. And, and you, you're, that's when all your questions can, you know, you can look at it and get all your questions out and stuff.
Thanks, thanks, Mayor.
Yep.
Okay, beyond the revenue, I think the month was a typical month. I mean, the expenditures, if you look at check register, there was nothing out of the ordinary in that regard. Uh, I think operating expense, actually, you know, I was looking ahead in March and even this month, things are obviously starting to tick down a little bit in terms of the expenses. So while the revenue's declining, so is the expenses too, obviously not a thousand a dollar, but we'll, we'll kind of gain a little bit in that regards. So as time goes on. Um, other than that, I have no other further comments. If anyone has a question, obviously, feel free to uh, reach out to me at any time.
Any, any other questions for Craig?
I don't know any.
A motion to approve the Treasury's report, February 2020?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions? Okay, all right, so the Treasury's report's approved. Thank you, Craig, for all your work on that. I know it's a bit of a learning curve, municipal budgets are a little bit different.
Lot different, a lot different.
Yes, right. So I appreciate you uh, all your work and.
I'm getting there, I'm getting there. Every month, I learn a little more, every week, every month, I'm getting there. Give me time, guys, I'll, I'll be up to speed, no time.
Yes, sir. Thank you, we appreciate it. Okay, and then Chief, your public safety report?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. Can you all see me okay now? Yep. I can't see my own picture on my screen. I'm working off a tablet here and it's like three feet away from me, but uh, you guys can see me.
It's pretty good, we, we got most of your face now, but we're missing a little bit of your head, but it's okay.
Oh, that's okay, okay. Uh, we're going to talk about the public safety report covering the period of March 9th through April 7th. Uh, I think you have it in your packet there. You can see, we did have a lot of events during this almost one month, 820 events. But as you can see, almost two-thirds were, were patrol checks. Uh, a lot less traffic enforcement that we're doing, obvious, for, for obvious reasons. The rest of the calls have been kind of static or steady, but you'll see an increase in patrol checks and an increase in meetings, which are a lot of the, the daily conference calls that myself and the other officers participate in with both the Carroll County Emergency Management Office, with the sheriff and the other chiefs, as well as uh, the Maryland State Police, the, the COVID-19 Coordination Center. They have about a, once every week, conference call. So a lot of meetings, which, which, a lot of conference calls, which have been documented as meetings. Um, and that's, that's kind of it. The patrol checks, again, um, we're doing a lot of the patrol checks of downtown businesses, um, particularly while they're closed and during all times of the day and night. Uh, and, and most of our patrol checks are to look for violations of, of the governor's executive orders. Uh, we've, we've, you know, we were having the issues with the skate park that you guys were aware of. Thankfully, Officer Kirchner was able to catch five individuals back on March 30th that had trespassed and were there. And actually, what is not reflected on this report is, as recently as uh, April 8th, Officer Kilgore, or excuse me, Officer Kirchner again caught two other people that had snuck into the skate park despite the, the fences and the signs. And these, these two individuals ended up having some, some drugs and alcohol in their vehicles. So um, we are still busy, it's just a different kind of busy right now. Uh, any questions about um, any of the events listed on page one or any of the, the 15 incident reports, which I, I think I gave you a copy of? What I didn't give you this time was an individual printout of all the assist other agency calls and the community policing calls. But if you have any questions about any of those, I'll be more than happy to address them.
No, I don't have.
Okay, I don't either, thanks. I would just like to say that, um, I'm sorry, was there a question? No, just saying, thanks, sir.
I just want to be sure, there's a feeling, um, you know, they're not endangering themselves, obviously, but are they getting enough protection? Do they feel like we're, we're out there for them?
Uh, yes, I believe they do. I was just going to say, you know, my priority has, has always been remains keeping our officers healthy. Uh, we, we take twice a day temperatures of every officer. Uh, we document that, we ask each officer to complete a screening sheet, uh, which was, goes into their personnel file, their medical records. So I think we're doing a pretty, pretty good job internally of making sure our officers are, are staying healthy. Uh, but as you can see from the list of incidents, I mean, we're still having to go into apartments, we're still having to go into homes, we're still having to make arrests, albeit somewhat less than normal. Um, so we are still coming in contact with the public and that's obviously where, where the greatest risk is. So um, we're doing the best we can with the PPE that we have. There, there has been some strides made recently, uh, both through MEMA as well as Sheriff Dewey's just recently dropped off, I think it was about 30 Tyvek suits. So we're pretty good in terms of PPE right now. Like everyone else, we're still short on masks, but we're making do with what we have. And uh, we recently uh, uh, decided to purchase a vehicle decontamination process. It's kind of like a fogger that you set up inside your vehicle, runs off a compressor. And so therefore, if we, we have, any of our officers have to transport anybody in vehicles that may have been positive, um, we, we can, uh, after that is over with, we can defog that whole vehicle and completely decontaminate the inside. And the sheriff has some other things. And the sheriff has some other things available to us as well, uh, including a, a personal decontamination site set up at one of the high schools. As well as um, he's actually has a, a transport van that he's putting into, into place. So that hopefully if we have to make an arrest, instead of having to put a person in our, one of our cars and transport them, we can call the transport van. And they'll come down and pick up a prisoner and, and, and transport him for us. So. We're, we're doing all we can to keep our officers safe and uh, you know, knock on wood, well, we've been fortunate so far, but um. We're going to continue to be diligent and, and do the best we can and while, while still, you know, doing, doing our duties on a daily basis.
I just wanted the officers to know we're thinking about it.
Thank you. I'll certainly relay that.
Yeah, absolutely. All of us are chiefs, so yeah, make sure that comes from, on behalf of the entire mayor and town council, because. Of course. Every one of us has been thinking about that daily and we appreciate them being out there. Have you noticed any uptick in, in uh. Other agency calls? Because I know they were saying that, you know, some, with all the people being home, you really haven't seen it too much, but um, have you seen?
One of the reporters from the Carroll County Times reached out to us. I think I'm having Sergeant Kilgore do some research, I guess. They're, they're questioning whether we've had an uptick in, in cases like domestics and things of that nature, huh? And I think Sean's listening in, but I don't think we've actually seen an uptick. Um, but again, we're not that far into this thing. It could certainly get worse. Obviously, the more time people are, are confined into, into, you know, the dwellings, uh, the more opportunities for those sort of things to happen. Uh, but I think our calls have been fairly steady for the most part. I guess the biggest uh, decline has been in traffic enforcement and that's kind of self-imposed because I've. I've told the guys um, to, to minimize their traffic enforcement. You'll see, we only did, I think. Twelve traffic enforcement initiatives during that whole month, whereas in the past, we'd have probably had a couple hundred. So we're trying to minimize our contact with the public unless we absolutely have to and, and then, then we'll do what we have to do.
Right, no, I think that that makes sense to be safer rather than lead that as incident, uh, you know. When somebody's violating the law, then you got to interact with them, but otherwise, yeah.
Got to do what you got to do sometimes, absolutely.
Okay, anything else, chief, or?
All I have, unless anybody else has any specific questions for me.
Any questions for the chief? All right, chief, well, thank you so much. We appreciate you guys being out there and all the work you're doing. We really do appreciate that. Thank you.
Of course, thank you.
Okay, I don't know that anybody has any council committee reports, obviously unless you've been doing some Zoom meetings on the side or something. Everything's pretty much uh, the same from my perspective from last week, but does anybody have anything you'd like to add?
Just one thing, uh, Mayor, is that I wanted to thank Derek and Public Works for putting up a sign uh, up in Raincliff. Uh, there was an inquiry that came in from uh, one of the residents to the town. Um, I did consult with uh, the president. And they would like one more sign, Joe. I don't know if that's possible uh, to bring up there for their gazebo. I know that the signs say that, you know, there's for parks, uh, they're not for gazebos. Uh, but the president of the Raincliff believes that by putting up that sign, it'll deter people from using the gazebo as a park. Um, which is kind of what's beginning to happen when we, when they shut down uh, the playground. So if we get one more up there for them, they would appreciate it. Um, and then uh, maybe we can go from there.
Okay, yeah, I think, I think we have another sign or two that we can, we can pull up there. It might be a, uh. A park closed temporarily sign or something like that, but, but we'll get something up there for them.
Okay, Stacy, you're up.
I hit my button here. Yes, thanks, Mayor. Uh, just a, just want to let everybody know that uh, despite the fact that we're not meeting. Our Spark uh, co-chair Alex Reeves went ahead and created a virtual egg hunt for the kiddos on Facebook, so. Um, trying to keep them as involved and active as possible with the egg hunt this year despite the fact that we shut down. Um, and as usual, uh, not as usual, but as expected, of course, we're not going to be meeting uh, in April.
That's awesome. Super cool. Thank you for sharing that. That's awesome. Any little thing you can get in this uh. In this world that's positive like that right now is awesome. So tell them, say thank you for that. It's pretty cool. Okay, any, anybody else? Any comments?
Yeah, this is Leo. Um, we did have a DSC, DSC Zoom meeting back on March thirtieth and I would have reported on it last meeting, but I couldn't figure out the mute button. Um, but I think I've finally figured that out, so I think we're good. That was a brief meeting. Uh, two agenda items were. Obviously moving the Art and Wine Festival from mid-May. Um, we postponed it to the September twelfth date. Is what we're looking at right now. If we can get all the vendors and everybody online, that's the weekend before the Maryland Wine Festival in Westminster. So we're really hoping to be able to pull that off. And we also have um, open applications for additional board members on the DSC. We have some spots to fill, so we're accepting applications through the end of the month and maybe even longer if we need to. And we're going to have another Zoom board meeting next Monday.
Okay, great. Any questions for Leo? Anything? I guess I have a question, I guess, for either you or Al. Have, have you guys been in communications with the businesses and gotten a, a pulse on? You know, what's going on and what are people thinking of, like, you know, just. Don't know if there's been a meeting where everybody's been talking about the impacts and if they're getting the resources they think they need and that kind of stuff.
So uh, I did, I did pass on the uh, small business grant from uh, the Carroll County as soon as that came out. Thanks to Carrie sending that email pretty quickly. Uh, I really have not heard too much back from them on if that was easy to get, if there was money available. I could uh. I could uh, send an email out and see how they're doing. I haven't heard anything really. There's been no mention of any meetings or anything at this point in time.
Well, that might be a good idea. I mean, maybe we could set something up even with, if we wanted to bring in Ed and sort of like have a meeting to. See if they have questions about the resources or, or where to get them. You know, I think it might be something to be a little proactive to try to. Help them. I know the bank, like I deal with BBNT and they just stuck me in a queue to try to get that. Uh, the paycheck protection money, so who knows how that's going to work out? It'll probably be gone by the time I get out of the queue, but at, at the same time, it would be good to at least start to. I, I, and I've been telling Ed this, Howard County has a, a wizard. You type in your situation, how many employees do you have? All your stuff, right? And then it pops up and tells you what you qualify for. So I would be glad to share Howard County's wizard with our business people because it's the same, you know? We could, we can snatch their wizard and try to, but I told Ed, we really should get something like that to people, because you know. That, that was my goal, was to find out quickly what you qualify for and how you can hurry up and apply for it, because. I, I'm just concerned that some of our businesses are really going to need some help and I wanted to try to get out in front of it and do what we can to help them, so. Maybe talk.
Yeah, I will, I will uh, coordinate with you to try to get at. I think you and Ed would be good in a Zoom meeting with that and. Try to get a night together and just do a quick uh, half hour, forty-five minute meeting. That'd be great.
Yeah, that would be good. We can reach out to him and see if, if there's a way to get that moving, because I think quicker on that's going to be. Best, so if we could, we might have to try to do that quick, but.
Yeah, follow up with you, uh, via email after the meeting.
Okay, great.
And then I, I just have a comment along these same lines as, as our, uh, as our small town, um, I mean, as our small businesses in, in Sykesville here. Um, I think if we could just continue to be individually supportive and um. Kind of from afar, call out at our neighbors, make sure everybody's okay. Um, and then just encourage everyone. They are really thinking out of the box. Uh, all of our small business owners are doing what they can to um. Open up some avenue for revenues. Uh, many of them are offering um, gift certificates for future use. Um, for their services if they're a service oriented uh, location or their retail. Um, and some of them are actually uh, you know, doing curb side pickup. And, and, and they're putting inventory online on their Facebook pages and Instagram. So there is still continued opportunity for those businesses that, whose doors are actually closed um, for us to, to continue to contribute and support.
Yeah, that's great. That's good to know. And then that's something we should be promoting too, is however we can find out. So when we have that meeting, Al, maybe we can figure out who's got opportunities. And how we can promote them to um, maybe on our town sites and wherever, however we can, but I think the word needs to get out, because. I don't, everybody doesn't know what everybody's got and what they can get, so we'll try to work on that.
Yeah, Julie did that really cool thing with the uh, videos to tell your story, uh, with some of the businesses. That was really cool. Keeping people engaged with Main Street.
Okay, good, yeah. Anything we can do to get, to help out all across the board is what I'm trying to get at, because I know this is going to be tough. This is tough. For small businesses right now, so it's going to be a tough time. So I appreciate that. So we'll talk and we'll get something on that, but. I didn't, did you have any other thing to share with Leo or?
No, nothing else right now, but that's the idea. If we can start linking up with the businesses a little more, that'd be helpful.
Okay. All right, um, and then, all right, so now we're down to if there's no more comments, uh, committee comments. One, did Mark, did you have something? You were. Okay, all right. Um, so public comments then, so. Public comments are typically limited to three minutes per person, but um. If you alert the staff that you would like to make a public comment by pressing uh, star nine to raise your hand. One at a time, um, you'll be taken off mute and then we can identify the person um, by the last four numbers of their phone number. Once you're done giving your public comment. Uh, you can be returned to mute. So do we have any public comments this evening? So we'll give it a minute.
Nobody's raising their hand yet. So again, that's star nine to raise your hand.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and assume that we don't have any public comments this evening, but thank you, those of you who have joined from the public. We really appreciate your participation. And um, I think that's about it, so we'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And before we do that, we didn't have any closed session stuff, because I saw Dennis here, right? So we're, we're okay?
We're good. No closed session.
Hi, Dennis. Okay, all right, just want to make sure. All right, then, in that case, we're adjourned. All right, thank you all. Be safe and um.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, good to see everybody.
Yeah, back at you, Leo. See you guys.
Have a good night.
Stay safe.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thanks, you too, chief.
Okay.